Would you call the roll, please?
David Burris.
Here.
Wes Brines.
Present.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Here.
Kayla Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remind everyone again, if you have a conflict of interest, please let the council know before we vote on that particular item. And before you make a motion to approve the agenda, a couple of changes to it. The 2020 Loss Control Safety Achievement Award. Lori's not available to witness tonight to receive that award, so we'll remove that one from the agenda until she can be available. The other thing I'd like to point out is that you've probably noticed the committee reports have been moved to the end of the agenda. Wes had raised a question about the possibility of moving them. Having them at the front of the agenda, the concern is that there may be people who want to get into the bulk of the meeting, not so much the committee reports. So by moving them to the end of the agenda, people can be here for the important business. The committee reports are important, but moving them to the end, as far as council time, it's not going to take us any more time to get through the meeting if we have it at the front end of the agenda or at the back end of the agenda. As I said, the committee reports are important. For a lot of folks, that's the only way for them to hear what's going on in the city on a regular basis. So move that to the back end of it. Keeping in mind that we removed the 2020 Loss Control Achievement Award. Can I give a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I make a motion to approve the agenda, removing 2020 Loss Control Safety Achievement Award to a later date and amending the agenda to move the committee meetings, committee reports to the end of the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes for the last council meeting, please.
Make a motion to move, make a motion to approve the management of November 2nd council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the bills in the frame, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill in the frame for $161,742.35.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the current claims, please.
I make a motion to approve the current claim, $47,629.08.
Second. Discussion?
I got one question on page two. We're doing a refund on that loading water dock. If we had problems in the past with this, or is this something new, or I don't know if Public Works has ever had problems with rust in the water system before?
Couple of weeks ago, there was a discoloration in city water in several locations. It came from a problem with the one gallon tank flowed inside of it, has dislodged itself and filled up the bottom of the tank. So it disturbed some of the sediment there. This particular individual noticed when he filled up with water that there was, in his opinion, rust in the tank and asked for a rebate. And that was approved by the city engineer.
I just, I'd never heard of any problems before and I was just kind of curious what was going on.
It wasn't a problem with the loading dock in southwest. It was the water was coming from the one gallon tank.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the credit card claims, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims. They amount of $4,540.74.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communications from the public. Terry Hin.
Yeah.
You wanted to address the council?
Yeah, can I just stand up here or do I need to go to the microphone?
If you go to the microphone, please. And when you're done, we give you a free plastic bag. It's on the city.
Okay.
If this phone is ready, the microphone will be done, please. State your name and the state of insurance good for the record.
Yes, my name is Terry Hin, H-I-N-N. I'm rather in Hot Springs. I live about four and a half miles northwest of town. I'm a businessman, entrepreneur of sorts. I own five businesses, all of which are in Nebraska. First of all, I appreciate what you guys do. I spent 15 years on the city council in Rushville, so I know it's a job you don't get a lot of accolades about, but I appreciate what you do. The reason I'm here tonight is, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, the state of South Dakota's passed the availability of medical marijuana in the state of South Dakota. And I see it as an opportunity with, you know, the veterans and other things, that it would be a good access, I think. You know, we're not talking smoking weed and bongs. Most of this is through tenexers, oils and stuff like that. I passed around a couple of papers, though, the studies behind it, of what it does with Parkinson's disease, cancers, Alzheimer's, is pretty serious work. And it's going to happen. And basically, I just, I'm here to get you folks, at some point, you're going to have to come up with regulations or whatever else, so I just wanted to get the ball rolling, kind of. Obviously, I'm not expecting any answers because I don't, the state doesn't come down with anything yet, but just wanted to stop in, like I say, try to get the ball rolling a little bit and maybe come back in 30 days and see if there's any sort of, you know, this is something that you can do overnight. I mean, with starting corporations and buying buildings and stuff, it's going to take a while. The state, I believe, is required to have things in line by April 22nd and which would allow businesses to open July 1st. So it's six months away or so, so it's not a long time. Any questions from any of you?
So you're looking to start a business, is what you are?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it'd be what's called a dispensary.
Yes. So what is your thought line on this?
What is my thought line?
Yeah, as far as the business portion of it.
Well, I think-
How would you say yours?
Well, like I said, I own and operate five businesses, all are successful. I know how businesses work. Obviously, it goes down as supply and demand, but you have to have availability to do it, too. One of my businesses, I opened about eight months ago, a liquor store in Shattan, and we've become the largest liquor store in the whole county of Nebraska, volume-wise. So I, like I said, I know business. I see an opportunity more than anything with this is with the veterans, though. You know, I'm kind of an outsider looking in. I'm new to the community, five years. You peg yourself as the veterans' community, the veterans' city. And this, among most, any other thing around would give more benefit to some of the problems the veterans have here with the post-traumatic, you know, stress. And like I say, everything from Alzheimer's to cancer to Parkinson's, there's a lot of stuff, and to be honest with you, there's probably a lot of stuff that hasn't even been tested and used for yet. But I just think there's an opportunity there. It'd be something in the community, there'd be obviously revenue and cash revenue for the city. I've been in contact with a close personal friend of mine who's from Rushville. The bank's now headquartered down in Rapid City, Security First Bank. I visited with Greg Hunter last week and he said, you know, because right now it's illegal federally, so there cannot be any money deposited into any FDIC-regulated banks. And they're trying to work on that, see how they can work around that to try to make that, you know, it's been that way in Colorado for years. You know, another thing where it just kind of shows you where things are happening around here, I'm in the manufacturing housing business. I had a gentleman come into my office today from the reservation, they're looking at putting up 50 greenhouses. And they came to me looking for housing. They're starting work, you know, in the next 30 days on that. As you know, or if you don't know, the reservation legalized this in October. Everything from growing it to possessing it to recreationally using it. So it's here to stay and, you know, obviously, it's got to be regulated. But I just, I look at it as a business opportunity, you know, way of revenue, you know, generating revenue, not like for myself, but for the city and for the town.
I guess I should specify my question. How, in your mind, in your design, what would the security be?
The security? Well, it probably, right now, I mean, for example, it depends. You know, you're going to have to have somebody there probably that, I don't know. You know, to be honest, I don't know if it's for our security. I, like I said, I own a liquor store. We have alarm systems, we have things that'll keep it safe. We have buttons underneath cash registers that'll call 911 and just push a button. I don't think, especially in a town like Hot Springs, is it being, you know, enticing crime. I think especially with the medical marijuana, these people are using it medicinally, you know, it's like pharmacy, basically. Obviously, the store would have to be secure when nobody's there. You know, like I say, in my other business, I have alarm systems. You have to punch a code in when you come in, you have to punch a code when you go out. There's motion detectors, the glass breaks, alarms go off, and the police states the first people, first people call, and then I'm second.
Let me ask you a question. I'm sure you probably were, we have a summer program up there at the VA, subsidized rehab treatment.
Right.
I, as a veteran, do know that there are some vets that will fake to get the stuff. How are you going to be able to know the difference?
It's not up to, say, have to have a prescription from the physician.
Like I said, they know how to work the system. How are you going to be, how are you going to be able to handle that?
Well, and again, I'm just starting this, too, but to be honest, yeah, I can't disregard a physician's prescription. If he issues it, I've got to, I've got to-
You know, if I come in, hand you a piece of paper, you'll accept that as a physician, or what you call a doctor?
Oh, no, it'd be just like a pharmacy. You know, you have to have, you know, checkmarks you go through to make sure, number one, they're official, they're not forged and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yes.
One thing, Terry, you've kind of, you've almost stated the things that we would have to answer to you, is that I appreciate you coming. It, you know, it passed the election and it's on our agenda to start discussing it in public safety, whether that's the only committee that stays in or not, that's yet to be determined. But we certainly do have to wait and find out what the state tells us we can do, what we have to do, what are, any ordinance will look like after that. So in that respect, I certainly agree with you that we are certainly at the beginning of this. Don't know what the answers are, I doubt if any of them are going to be easy. But, yeah, we also understand this is just the beginning process and we are starting to look at it.
Yeah, and that's the only reason I came here tonight, when I visited with the mayor a little bit, and, you know, several questions, I mean, I'll be able to answer, because I don't know yet. But, you know, Larry, one of the questions you asked, that's a great question. There's going to have to be some checks and balances there to make sure it's a true physician's, you know, signature. You know, for example, is it legal if somebody from Nebraska has one that comes up here? If they're not, so there's a lot of questions to be answered and I don't know. I just, again, wanted to come tonight to try to get the ball rolling because it's going to happen. And sooner than later, like I said, I know the state has to have stuff in order by, I believe it's like April 22nd. And it's supposed, the way the amendment's written, where businesses can open July 1st. So I don't know, you know, if that timeline will stick or not, but that's how it's proposed anyhow. Thank you for your time, appreciate it, maybe we'll see you in 30 days or so. Thank you.
Larry?
Larry?
Terry.
Yes, yes.
Larry, Terry?
That's right, Larry, Terry.
To take me back on Bill's comments, when you called and asked me, you know, what the city's position was on medical marijuana, I said no comment.
Right, right.
Because at this point, we're going to slow rock this and we're going to see what the state comes up with first and then how we fit into all of that. So looking at a particular timeframe, you know, the state will have to figure out by a particular date.
Oh, right, I understand.
That would be responsible for us to do that. But you're right, it's something that, because it has been legalized in the state of South Dakota, first the state's going to have to figure out where they fit in all that and then we're going to have to figure out where we fit in with the state.
Yeah, that's, you know, and one thing about it is, as I understand it, that each locale has the authority to do what they want with it. You know, like I said, as I was on the city council, you know, for 15 years, when something's voted 82% to 18%, you pretty much have to follow what the constituents want. So that's why I feel it's probably going to happen. And so I just wanted to, like I say, kind of get the ball rolling. You guys, you guys have to do the hard work here. And like I say, I'll try to stay in touch with you and when you feel you have some answers, I'll come back in and visit with you. All right, appreciate your time, thank you.
Got another question?
Yes, yes, one more.
In looking through what you provided, it looks like the source of this document is Lifehack, is that correct?
Yeah, to be honest, I just Googled it.
Okay.
Yeah, but it has, I don't know if I included the page that has the references. If you look on the very back, I don't, I don't know if I printed off all, I know I didn't print off all the pages because there was like 27. I picked out the, I think they had 20 illnesses that-
Yes.
Yeah.
There's 20 here. Okay.
And if not, I can get you that, but like I said, I just, I Googled it. I was an EMT for 15 years, too, but I don't, I don't pretend to be medically, you know, fine, but I just, so I Googled.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You wanted me to take that, did you?
Yes, that's, that's on the city of Hot Springs.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
You keep that for a bit and we'll probably, we'll trade it in for a cup of coffee. We got just a few minutes here before our presentation from DOT. If we could jump down to personnel. No, I'm sorry, you have to bid already, that's the 7:20 that I'm waiting for, not DOT. Well, still, now let's jump down to personnel, if I could get a motion on the personnel actions. That'll chew up a few of our minutes. Billy, Bob?
Hi.
Another communication-
Can I address the council for a second on this?
Yes, you're absolutely correct, you've got about a minute.
I'll make it quick. And I realize I should have been on your agenda, but my name's Casey Cook.
No, you don't have to be on the agenda.
Casey Cook.
C-A-S-Y?
C-A-S-Y, C double O K, yeah.
We'll give you as much time as you need after the 7:20 bid opening to finish, but we will-
Okay. Basically, I moved here a couple of years ago. I moved from Drango, Colorado, okay? EMT for 20 years there. And I know South Dakota's passed the marijuana deal. I just wanted a little insight as to what it did to a town that's just about your size. It destroyed a beautiful town, okay? Everybody wants to talk about what's inevitable, it's going to come, you've got to accept it. You don't. A little town that I lived in, just outside of Drango, Bayfield, we were able to keep dispensaries from coming into town because we could do that, okay? It was determined by the board. Now, with that being said, everybody will talk to you all day long about how great it is to have pot come in, all right? The problem with it is, is one, even medicinal, and I'm not going to get into the debate if it's good, bad, or indifferent. What I am going to get into debate is now it's in the home. Controls in the home get pretty lax. I went to the high school before it became recreational and picked up kids laying on the floor that were so loaded, they couldn't go to school. They couldn't make it to class. Why? Because their parents decided that it was a bonding moment to smoke pot with them, okay? So I'm just saying, they'll talk to you all day long about, oh, we're going to generate all this revenue. Well, now think about this. Their cartels-
Casey?
Yes?
I need to ask you to pause, just go ahead and grab a seat, we'll do our 7:20 opening.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
That's fine, let's finish. Okay, so we have a 7:20 bid opening, sealed bid for the Armory property. We received one bid. And the bid is from Richard Olstead, 2033 Lincoln Avenue, Hot Springs, South Dakota. Property bid for this project is $26,000. Type of proposal, if you folks remember, the proposal had workforce housing, single-family residential and alternate utilization. He's marked alternate utilization. He has included a check for $500, earnest money deposits. To whom it concerns, my proposal for the Armory property is put living quarters in the north end of the existing building and use the south end for garage space. I have selected I will provide the city with plans and insurance and my chosen contractor's license. I would like to send this back to planning and zoning to have him provide them the details of what it is that he wants to do and see whether that fits in our zoning ordinances. Thoughts? All right.
I'd like to have a little more description of what his plans are also, because I really don't want to jump here and showing up there in the residential, residential arc area. So I know that's been a coveted use for people who previously wanted that property, so yeah, I'd like to know a little more about that.
All right.
So how's that fit into the value of the estimated?
Sorry, I didn't hear that question.
Estimated value for the Armory property? Is it?
Not that I'm aware of at this point. The, it's actually two properties. It's a property to the north, it used to be the old Olstead property that the city traded for. Value of that property, when we traded for it, I believe, was at 20,000 or 21,000. The value of the property that the Armory's sitting on itself, I'm not sure what that value is. That was too low that we were offering on it. Again, I'd like to send this to planning and zoning, let him detail on that, what his plans are and see if it fits with our zoning ordinances. Let them come back with a recommendation that it does or doesn't fit, and then bring it back in front of council and see if you want to accept the proposal.
Certainly seems reasonable.
Reasonable. John, I'll get this to you after the council meeting. Casey, thank you.
No, thank you, and like I said, and I'm not going to take up a whole bunch more of your time, but once we bring marijuana in and we tax it because it's going to get taxed heavily by the state, that raises the price of it, all right? So the legal action picks up because they can sell it cheaper, it's not taxed, okay? Everyone talks always to the councils about, oh, we're going to get all this great money. Well, first off, you've got to put some morality with the money. Second, nowhere in Colorado, and I've checked many times, okay, can they tell me where the money went? They'll tell you that it goes for schools, but yet every year, they come to us and want more money for the schools. And then they say, well, when did the general fund? Well, that wasn't what it was supposed to do, all right? So I'm just saying, you guys as council members, and I sat on boards also, so I know what you're faced with. But I'm saying, you have some choices to make on how you want to administer this and have it come into your town. It is not what, we spent billions of dollars in this country, you know, they talk about the CBD oils and what the other, okay, that's all well and good, but it still ends up being you have a lot of people that are smoking dope, all right? We spent billions of dollars in this country trying to get our people to quit smoking cigarettes, but yet we're turning around and making it okay for our kids and our young adults to smoke pot. Now, you can take all kinds of scientific studies, it's just like politics, and play at either side and make it go, but I said, by the time you see the effects of what it does to a town, it's too late. That's what's happened at Drango. We now have all these homeless people there, they're driving around, they're all stoned on the streets, they won't allow people in. You know, it's a tourist town, just basically like we were or are, agricultural town. They hang out in front of all the businesses because they want to hit up the tourists, okay? Then you've got the homeless camps to deal with. You know, it just creates a lot of problems. So there's tough decisions for you to make, but do some looking around as what it's done. And don't just listen to the politicians that are pushing or the people that are making a lot of money off of it. The San Juan Lewis Valley, which used to be one of the largest growing areas there was for ground crops, potatoes, carrots, lettuce and stuff, they're plowing it all up to make hemp. We've got to eat somewhere, okay? So I'm just saying, do some research on your own and look at this, and I appreciate your time. I'm not saying that this stuff is terrible, but I'm saying I've seen the destruction that it does cause. And you will have choices for the town. Just because the state says it's legal doesn't mean that every town has a dispensary. Now, does that mean that we, in the town of Drango, there's nine dispensaries in a town of 13,000 people? Now, think about that. And we've probably got nine hemp drawers around it. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there anyone else from the public, any more communications from the public that would like to address the council?
You got one.
State your name, please.
My name is Ed Harvey. I don't know if you want me to talk now or, we've been approached by, at the Legion-
Are you, are you getting close?
I represent the American Legion. We've been approached by the city, the police department and the city council, one member on various issues. The first issue, I think you all have a map, that I asked to be distributed, I was asking, yeah, that's it. The Legion typically, in the past, has sponsored a Veterans Dinner and a Thanksgiving Dinner. This year, the ladies in the auxiliary, the driving force, canceled both those events because they didn't feel comfortable with being in that facility with 500-plus people. canceled both those events because they didn't feel comfortable with being in that facility with 500-plus people. Uh, which is totally understandable. So, a coalition of local organizations, Food Pantry, the Meals on Wheels, and actually, the auxiliary's gonna help us, uh, are going to have a Thanksgiving dinner, they're going to dispense it from the Catholic Church, which I guess everybody knows what that is, right? Kind of to the northeast of, uh, the Wells Fargo Bank. Wells Fargo has, uh, agreed to allow that empty parking lot to be used for staging area. Uh, if you'll notice on the map, there are five Xs. Those are positions where Legion riders will be to try to control traffic. Hopefully minimize disruption to the flow of traffic in the area. And I don't know what else to say about it. We, this was discussed with the chief of police and one of the council members, Mr. Minkos. So, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Now, what exactly is this for?
It's for the Thanksgiving dinner that would typically have been held at the American Legion. Okay? And since we canceled it, the, uh, several people in town were very upset, I guess, because the appropriate word, we weren't going to have the dinner. Uh, and so, the Food Pantry, the Meals on Wheels, decided that they would get some other organizations involved and have a drive-through pickup meals and containers for Thanksgiving for those that wanted a meal. Okay?
Is this a free meal, a purchased meal?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, it's a donation only. It would be free if you don't wanna donate, if you do, then that would be accepted. Uh, so far, to the best of my knowledge, between the Legion family and a couple of other charitable organizations in town, uh, I believe there's about $2,000 that's been donated to the Food Pantry to buy food for this event. So, you know, it's, uh...
So you're expecting quite, quite a large...
To be honest with you, Dave, I don't know what to expect.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, you know, we assume there would be probably, in years past, we had 500 to 600 people. Okay? Uh, this year, it may be less, it may be more. The other thing that's going to happen is Meals on Wheels is going to deliver meals to the, uh, places like the Evans, the, uh... Where it's on the river.
The Brookside.
The Brookside, yeah. And I think they're probably intend on going up to be five meals also. You know, I know they have asked for those people to give them a list of individuals who would like a meal, and they don't expect most of those people to be able to, uh, to drive down, and most of them don't drive. You know, we're trying to do the best we can to provide a meal to those who need it. But, you know, we've never done this before, so I can't tell you what to expect. You know, in this parking lot, by the Wells Fargo Bank, they envision four lines of cars. If you look, there's kind of a faint line down the middle of it, that's a bunch of parking bumpers. And they're envisioning two lines of cars on either side of that. And at that point, they will be taking orders, I need five meals, I need 12 meals, whatever. And they'll put that on your windshield, and they'll also, we bought some two-way radios, the riders did, so that we can be in contact with the people at the church, so they won't be caught by surprise as to how many meals are added and delivered to a car.
Will this be on Thanksgiving Day?
Yes, sir.
What time will you start?
Starts at 11 and it ends at 2.
Do you have enough volunteers?
Uh, I'm not in charge of volunteers, the ladies at the, uh, Food Pantry are in charge of that. I personally don't have a contact number for them, but you can call my wife and she can give you a contact number. If you'd like her number, I'll do it to you.
Is there, is there something, sorry, is there something that you're wanting to request from the city? I mean, uh, you said you talked to Bill and, hey, please, Chief Mike Close?
Right. Uh, as I understand it, since we are not on a numbered state highway, all we need is permission from the city council to direct traffic for this event.
I think in the, in really what they're gonna be doing, they're not really gonna be directing traffic, what they're gonna be doing is regulating flow from the Wells Fargo parking lot out into the, on the...
South Sixth Street.
On the, yeah, on the university, on the South Sixth Street, is to keep things flowing, so it's not that they'll be stopping traffic on any of the city streets, it'll be more, they'll be regulating the traffic flow from their staging area to their, uh...
Actual delivery.
Delivery point to keep things flowing and, uh, and, uh, Chief Close is on board with what they're doing, uh, and they've, they've done a really good job of planning out to keep things going. And so I think what we've got, when Ed came tonight, he wanted just to make sure that, uh, uh, the full council was informed of what they were doing. Uh, we've checked, you know, from an ordinance standpoint, there, there, there's really no requirements. You know, I don't, we don't need a motion to allow them to do what they're doing. Uh, we appreciate what they're doing, and they put a lot of good thought into it. And they're well with, uh, as we can tell from the research we've done, they're well within, uh, their legal rights and authorities of, of what they've done, and and the Legion Riders do provide traffic control for a variety of civic events, and this is just an extension of that.
Well, Ed, I'll tell you this one. I have no social life, so if you can get that number to me, I'll volunteer to help also.
Okay. Okay, I wanna write it down.
Yeah, you can probably just...
I wanna throw that out loud.
Yeah.
It's, her number is 605...
Wait one second.
605...
Okay.
And her name is Carol Harvey. And if you call her, she'll get you to the right people.
Until I can't say it, call you.
I know, and I'm already in trouble sometimes.
Thank you, sir. Alright, thank you, sir.
Ed, Ed, I, I accommodate, I, I wanna give you kudos to all of you, all of you. This is something, uh, just a little beyond stepping up. And it's nice to hear.
Well, you know, I, we sort of feel like, uh, one of the missions of the American Legion is to do what we can for it. And, and we try a little hard to look up to that. You're doing darn well. Is that all I need on that issue?
I don't think we're gonna find any arguing next year out of this community.
Give turkey dinners on Thanksgiving event a staple in this community that's so many people depend on, and I really wanna give you huge thanks and kudos for going with the times and what we're having to deal with.
Well, I appreciate that, and I will forward it to my wife, who is actually the lead person from the, for the Legion, because she's the president of the local auxiliary. She's the one that's sort of spearheading the effort here. Not me, I'm just, I've only got, I don't know, I've got the other fortune that you're coming to 24 years. If you could crowd the microphone a little bit more, that's okay. Let me move this chart.
Yeah, you can.
I have big feet.
Thank you.
The, the next issue that I was asked to address tonight by one of the council members, Mr. Romi, is, uh, there's some interest from the council and the city to put a piece of military equipment in the park across from the Legion. And he had asked if the Legion would support that. I, he asked me before the last Legion meetings, the executive committee unanimously approved supporting this effort, and the post also approved unanimously, supported this effort. Uh, we had a little bit of a discussion about funding. And he was, he didn't ask for money from the Legion, what he asked is if we would sponsor or help with fundraisers to raise money. What we, uh, talked about is basically a dark tournament. In the past, dark tournaments at the Legion for charitable purposes have generated something in the neighborhood of $2,000 to $3,000 in spend. So, we would be, I'm sure, can't say yes, because I don't have the authority to commit the Legion to anything on the way on, but I will bring this before the board and the, uh, and the post at the next Legion meeting, which is the second Monday of December. And I, I really see no reason why the body would not approve such an, I don't know. It's important, we are the veterans' town, we should have some military memorality of somewhere in town, I think that's an appropriate place to put it. So, we are behind you 100%. If you would, uh, if you would require for your documentation or letter to that effect from the American Legion, I can get that generated to Mr. Nelson at City Hall in the next week. Any questions about that? No? You wanna?
I'm, I'm not sure we're ready for a letter yet, we'll have that discussion when we get into the agenda item, see where we need to go. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Ed.
And the last issue was brought to me by our senior mayor. This is the flag of the old American Legion, I'm on that Verizon tower. The, I believe the individual I talked to today is responsible for maintaining that tower, if some little. And he assured me it was okay for us to put the flag back up. In the past, there was some issue, if you look at the pole, what you will notice is there are two sections at the top that are different from the rest of the pole. Those two sections were added a year and a half ago or something. They added a fiberglass shroud instead of being all steel like the rest of the tower. And the shrouds, if you look at them, are kind of distorted and deformed. It's probably from the flag, uh, they didn't seem to think, this individual didn't feel that was an issue. So, we will be raising the flag back up. We'll have to replace floodlights because the ones that are there burned out. So, we're working on that, hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll have the flag back up.
What size is the flag gonna be?
The contract we have with Verizon says the biggest flag we can put up there is a 12 by 20. That's what's been flying there the whole time. And it looks very small because that tower was 200 feet tall. So, if you have a 200-foot tall and a 20-foot flag, it doesn't look very big, actually, it's quite a large flag. The tower will not support the Garrison flag, which is maybe at least twice that size.
And to the size of the flag, Ed, I'll get you a copy of an email. My recollection as a gentleman that you spoke with was Dave Huskins. I may be mixing names here. Uh, but I'll put the question to them and ask them to get in touch with you, and you said you had, so, and I appreciate that. And I also asked specifically about the size of the flag because that's been an issue. I shared the email with Councilman Romi, Councilman Grimes, and I shared with our city administrator. And the gentleman said he had asked his boss. And without doing an engineering study, the largest sized flag that could be on the pole is a 24-foot flag.
We call this 20. And actually, we looked at our contract that we signed with Verizon, and that contract says the maximum size is a 20-foot.
Okay. And I just wanted to share publicly that I did ask the question because people are concerned about not having a big enough flag on it. Uh, and again, what Verizon said was that without an engineering study, the biggest size that could be on there is a 24-foot. And your contract with Verizon specif, uh, says by size, you agree to put up there?
No, that's what we've been putting up there, a 20-foot.
So, thank you for having the conversation with him. Uh, it's, the lack of a flag on the tower has come up, uh, in a couple of different, uh,
What we hear about earlier, the American Legion.
So, there'll be a lot of folks that will be happy to have a flag back up. Thank you for having that conversation. And, uh, we need you to get it up there, and I echo what everybody else has said when it comes to, uh, American Legion and what they do for the community as a whole, and our, our veterans in particular. Thank you for that.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
It means a lot to us veterans, it's, what you do is appreciated. Thank you. Any other questions with me in the future? Nope? Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Any other, any other communications from the public? Oh, we had something started.
All I wanna say, my name's David Zorman, I have, uh, I work for the U.S. Border Service, and I'm also the owner with my wife at the Wandering Bicing Coffee. And with, as far as the flag goes and any of the lights goes over the Legion, I wanna say that I will personally pay for those. If you will reach out to me, I would be more than happy to pay for that. My father and my two brothers all served in the military, and I'm 22 years with the U.S. Border Service. And I'm very proud to see that flag, no matter what size it is, to be up. And I wanna make sure that I'm a part of that, and I just wanna offer that, take it or leave it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, sir. Any other communications from the public? Alright, well, that takes us to, check to make sure, because I've missed a number before. Takes us to DOT. Rich, thank you for hanging on. Mike may have given up on us.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there he is. Rich and Mike are with the DOT, and they're gonna share some information about the Highway 183 delivery construction. Gentlemen, thank you for joining our council meeting and giving up your time to enlighten us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, presentation's probably a strong word. It's more of, uh, an update on where we are and some issues that we've come up against here as we get nearer and nearer to a potential levy. One issue is DOT's falling a little behind schedule on our, on our roadway acquisition. Uh, that's something we think we can resolve by, by moving some resources and taking some people away from other projects to work on this and, and focus specifically on Hot Springs. The other issue would be the West Oak Building in its condemned state. The DOT will not perform road construction in front of that building until it's at a state where it's no longer condemned and is insurable. So, I'm here to seek some feedback from the council on, on where we go to move forward. The way the DOT sees it is we have a couple of options. Number one would be for the DOT to reallocate our folks and, uh, circle wagons a little bit and get a project out the door by this spring. Now, what that would take is to separate the job. Okay, right now, we're planning on letting it all as one big package. Um, to get something out this spring, with the condition where, that the West Oak Building is in now, we have to avoid that entirely. So, we're thinking we separate the job at Minnacata and we can do everything south. Uh, the advantages to that is number one. Uh, both the, the highway and the utilities that are underneath it are in need of replacement. Uh, we've already had a number of water breaks, you can see the condition of the road. Number two is we avoid the West Oak Building by going earlier. Um, and we just eliminate that risk entirely. So, there are some risks with that, and there are some cons to that as well. Uh, the job was originally set up so that we could complete it in two, in two years. Okay? In order to do that, we had to open up work in different places. Okay? So, you could have a water and sewer crew working in one area, and maybe a hand paving crew working in another, and machine paving. So, what we wanted to do is keep the crews working. By separating the job and doing everything south in Minnacata, we are able to do a lot of those things. We're able to get the suspended sidewalk included. But it would push us into a third construction season. So, your community would be under siege for three years. So your community would be under siege for three years versus two. The alternative would be to hold off on the letting until the West Oak Building is, is no longer condemned, and we're able to do work by there and let it as all one package. Now, not knowing exactly where you are, that's probably closer to fall than spring, but that's where we want your feedback. A spring letting, doing half of the job, there's some risk of higher prices as our contractors fill up with work. It's a supply and demand, as was discussed earlier. In order for them to complete the work and the schedule we would give them, they would have to bid a lot of overtime into it. So there's some risk of higher prices. The alternative of waiting a year and letting it all in one, in one project, you might have some hungrier contractors, but there's always inflation. So there's some give and take with each option, but what we'd like to do is get some feedback from the Council, knowing full well that you've already lost one historic building in town. You know, if, if removal of this one means another one, then that's two in the last couple of years. So something to consider and some other options to consider. Thoughts?
If you let that go three years, what's the, what's the price of the bid, the second bid, because you're talking inflation on net too. So if you let it all out at one time, it'd be one price.
Correct. Yeah, correct. There is that, letting that second project, there is the inflation cost there as well.
So if it raises, it's going to cost City more dollars? And the state?
Certainly the state. The city portion, the city portion is, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, if you can, primarily utilities are south of Minnacada, the bulk of them. Yeah. So the contributing bid items for the city, the bulk of them would be in the south of Minnacada portion.
There's some going north, too.
Yes, there certainly are some.
There are some, but all of them are on the south.
Yes.
Is there a possibility, if we drag this out for three years, if we get a couple of years into it, things really go south, that the state would just pull their portion back? We'll just see.
Very unlikely. Yeah, that's what we're trying to avoid, yeah. By, by making sure we can get a contractor in town and keep them here without any unforeseen delays, very unlikely.
Okay. Problem, I see with the three years, is the businesses in town? I think you're, you're talking businesses for three years with road construction to town versus two. It's already can be a hardship for two years, let alone a whole nother year. So.
So if you let the bid for a single bid, that is going to take two years, and you're going to have construction all over town at the same time versus doing half the town to get it done, and then the other half of the town next year?
In, in order to get it done in two years, we just don't start on one end and go to the other. The way the sequence is set up now, it's broken up into 14 segments. Okay, the idea behind the segments here are that you can have different crews working. You know, if you, if you just took, you must complete a block at a time philosophy, we wouldn't be able to get it done in two. Because what you would have is, you'd have the highway crew would come in, they would do the removals. The crew would come in to do the city and water, and the highway crew would basically leave. Okay, then they would come back. And so those, each one of those segments would take a little longer. By breaking it up into the different segments, some segments have sewer and water, some do not. Some lend themselves to machine-type paving, some are all hand paving. The idea is that we can keep more crews moving all the time. And that's really the only way you can get it done in two years. Very aggressive even, getting it done in two years. We hired a consulting firm that did a constructability study, and they said if you combine it into one job and take some of these steps, you can save 90 days, which is an entire summer. It's not typically how we would do it. In fact, originally, we set it up to do University South and University North. One is a US 18 project, and the other would be 385. And we were looking at a year and a half or two years for each segment. And we did that review, and they said, you know, you can save 90 days by letting the whole thing at once. That's how we got here. Now we're kind of at risk of separating them again and costing another year of construction in Hot Springs.
Is there any idea of what increase would be? I know you can't tell me on materials, does that could be anywhere? Or what would the increase be on labor?
It's, it simply is what the market has. If these contractors, and we have a limited number of contractors in South Dakota, if they are full of work and they have to bid a lot of overtime in, then the price goes up. So the earlier you can let it into, you know, if we could let it in the fall or early winter, typically our prices are better simply because they're still looking for work. It's very competitive. Once they get a few jobs under them, they can still do the work, but it's going to take a lot more resources, but they'll have to either go rent equipment or pay a lot of overtime.
Do you have any idea what you're looking at as possible with that?
Boy, I don't. I can't give you an educated number on average, no. Historically, the later you get into the spring, the higher the prices.
And was in that business floor, I'm sure you guys have heard of it.
So are you looking to let it out this, considering this fall or next fall?
If, if we could, if we separate the job and things fell together pretty fast, the earliest we could let it is April of '21. If we wait, we're thinking more fall of '21.
For the first thing?
No. April of '21, if we separate the jobs.
That's when the jobs begin, or is that when the-
We probably couldn't get started until almost May.
Right.
Yeah. If we left them all at once and waited, we could do a fall letting, and the work would probably start in January of '22.
Would you think about letting it this fall and then starting first spring?
Fall of '21 would be the letting for the entire job and start the spring of '22.
I thought she was going to start doing some for this-
We can, if we separate them. Separating them, we could let, we could hold a letting in April and do the work south of Minnacada, and then there would be a separate contract. Once the West Oak Building was secured, then we could go north.
But that's, that'd be the three-year.
Yeah, that'd be the three-year option.
So if we get the West Oak stabilized by next summer, you could take off with the, with the two-year program in the fall?
Correct.
What's the latest date of that stabilization requirement?
We, we won't let a project to do the work pass there until we know it is. So we, the sooner the better, I guess is the answer there.
I'm guessing they probably need a date. Do you have any timeline where they could work on that up until a certain time to make sure you have a, a letting of it?
Well, we, we'd have to be pretty certain that it's going to happen before we would do a fall letting.
That'd be next fall?
Yeah.
So is there, is there any scenario that allows you to do one project and start next year, either next spring?
The first-case scenario would be, yeah. If the DOT could move some resources around, and we could get our right-of-way problem resolved, we're pretty confident that we can. It'll sacrifice some other projects a little bit, but we could get that done and, and hold a bid letting in April, and work could start next summer. But that, that would just be Minnacada South.
That'd be for three years.
But for the, for the two-year project, unlikely. Unlikely, yeah.
Start next fall.
So if we keep it a two-year project, the earliest start date is next fall. The earliest letting date, not knowing for sure when the West Oak Building will be off the condemned status, but we're hoping it could be done by next, by this next summer so we could let it in the fall, and then construction could start right away in the spring, or even some of this work could be done through the winter months.
How many actual miles total is the project?
Oh, wow.
Mile and a half.
Goes from- Why?
Goes from the junction of, of 18B to south of Taco John's to, up Battle Mountain Avenue to Somerville.
Somerville?
Two miles.
Typically, urban work like this, you figure you can do about three-quarters of a mile in a, in a season. We're going to try to get a little more than that done, but that's with a, kind of a different sequence with the segments rather than block by block.
So the Wall Show Building probably has to be stabilized by July or August of next fall, if you guys let it?
July, you know, would be good. We'll prob, if we're going to proceed that way, we'll be ready to go.
Then give us the two-year project.
Yes.
And if the Wall Show Building didn't exist by spring, then you could sell it in February?
Yes.
If the Wall Show Building didn't exist, they would be able to-
Okay.
And not be able to do your job that you-
We could, we could let the whole thing. So get it in the queue now, though, we're, we're looking at, you know, very early, you know, February-ish, but we have to know, because we're, we can't risk holding a letting and then holding a contractor up.
So everybody makes a good faith decision that we want to give a contractor an opportunity to stabilize the building. We have the conversation, they assure us they can stabilize the building, and then they can't stabilize the building by the time that you need to, you know, by July's, that you can let the project end April or in, in late 2021. What happens then? I mean, we've, we've pushed you back to the point where we think it can happen, and it doesn't happen. Then what happens?
We won't let a project until it is.
So then we're even further behind the ball.
Can you talk in two years if that was to hap, if that scenario happened?
Correct.
Close the vote.
Yeah.
Hang, hang on a minute, Mike. Justin was adjusting your volume, we can't quite hear you yet.
All right. I think the question was, what happens if the Wall Show Boat property isn't secured by summer of next year? You know, and I think we can work through some options, maybe it's an exception within that area. So we let them, but you're working on the overall contract, and they'll leave that small piece in there. But, you know, as, as Rich mentioned earlier, anytime you leave a piece out, you have to come back, and that's going to be more disruption to the city. And we've worked through a lot of different things on this particular project, and really we're here for responding to your input thoughts on where you think we should go on it.
Thank you.
So there's no scenario that this starts in the spring of next year?
So if the building was demoed by February, it could start in the spring and be two years?
We, we'd have to know and have a plan, you know, very soon for that, because even, even a demo with that building being attached to the one next to it or being right next to it is, is a considerable task. Yeah, it's just not something that you go knock down.
If we have a person or a group that we let the, let this building go to for stabilization, can they like talk to you and let you know what their plan is? And can you-
Not really our thing in the road business.
I mean, are you guys saying whether it's good enough or not?
Yeah, you would need to have somebody review it and take it off the condemned state. You've been working with a, with a professional engineering group, and that's who we would need, support from them, to say the building's insurable. Yeah, I don't think the DOT has the expertise in this matter.
So the city's currently, since 2003, the city's hired three licensed engineers to give their assessment, their professional judgment of the building. So any stabilization, renovation or whatever, any plan is going to need to have a licensed engineer's stamp on it. Or is it going to need to have a licensed engineer's stamp on it for the state to be satisfied that remediation is appropriate, adequate, will stabilize it?
It will, it will need a licensed stamp. Yeah.
I asked your attorney for an estimate of the amount of time it will take to get that property in the hands of the next owner, because we talk about it like we can make a decision, but we don't own it right now. So there's time.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at, if I, this is off the top of my head, I believe 60 days to conduct the sheriff's, the sheriff's sale, and then once that happens, I would probably guesstimate 60 to 90 days for the whole pro, for that, to even get into the hands of someone else.
60 days plus 60 to 90, or 60 to 90 total?
I'm just guessing 60 to 90 because just going on the timeframe that it, the other properties that we've been dealing with, how long it's taken with the sheriff's office and doing publication and, and things like that.
Yeah, that sounds fast compared to what we just went through.
So we're talking February before it could even be handed over to anybody?
And is that, is that timeline true also for it to go into the hands of the city?
Or we just have a bid on it?
What is the timeline, Garland, if we just went in and demoed it?
We have the court order in our hand, it's just a matter of the city making arrangements with a contractor to, to demo it.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mike, thank you very much for asking.
Yeah, I'll continue to work with the mayor and with John to move forward on this.
Rich, Mike, thank you for your time.
Yes, thanks, kids.
Thank you.
Drive careful going home. And don't forget your free. All right. That takes us to personnel. I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through D.
When I make a motion, that will approve personnel actions A through D.
Second.
Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Justin? It would be difficult to get the screen down.
Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item of business is ordinances. First ordinance, the second reading ordinance 1220, revising Title 15 Land Usage Chapter 150 Building Regulations. I get a motion on that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance 1220, revising Title 15 Land Usage Chapter 150 Building Regulations, 150.01B and 150.03, 150.04, I-12 and J-123.
donations program for a helicopter.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to apply to the U.S. Army donations program for a helicopter to be displayed at Centennial Park with a maximum dollar amount of repairs to pay for its demolition for demilitarization, sorry, to not exceed one thousand dollars.
Second motion. Discussion.
I would like to discuss with people, there's a transport cost. I got a whole, I, I called Gordon Nebraska got a helicopter and I tried to get ahold of the, the American Legion, they got one, to try to see what the cost to have delivered to Gordon and he never called me back. I'd like to have a price on this before we, I think it's a great idea and all the veterans I've talked to thinks it's a great idea, the hot springs need something like that. And I would say we could vote on it but I, I can't say what the cost of the transportation would be and it'd be tough for the city to vote on this. I'd like to table it until we know for sure but you guys have to.
Do you know where it's coming from?
Well, I don't know where it's coming from.
The reason I ask is why possibly we need a whole transportation budget?
Yeah, and I was talking with who asks is his brother's over the road trucker and he knows a lot of people and, and if we, if, I called and left a number to this, this organization out in Washington DC asking the contractor that authority with their helicopter because it's hard to say where the helicopters can come, they might come from elsewhere if we don't know until you find out, you don't know where it's gonna come from so it's, it's kinda tough to say what the shipping's gonna cost and, and that's what Bob and I talked about today. But the, the legions behind this and, and fund reasons, I mean, I, I bust my hump trying to get money to help this, to make this go through.
If you actually read this, it says to pay for demilitarization, not to exceed a thousand dollars. Is that in line?
Yeah. The only thing we have to worry about when this happens is to have freight of the helicopters around the hot spring.
I believe if I read this right, that the motion is allow the mayor to apply for this, uh, not to exceed a thousand dollars for demilitarization does not necessarily mean, because it may take years.
Yeah.
For this to come through, uh, it does not necessarily mean that we're gonna go ahead and authorize any transportation right now. May, we may have to have the application and get approved first of all before that can even be discussed.
True.
This is just allowing the mayor aye ayes, uh, to apply for the donation itself.
Yes. Uh, I respectfully read it differently. If you look at page two of the, the complete packet, uh, for the request for the helicopter, um, let's see, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, "Transportation of an item will be at your expense via a commercial carrier." So I would have to initial off acknowledging that whatever the cost of getting that vehicle here is at the cost of the city. Uh, so that goes in with the application and that's what Craig's talking about, is giving him an opportunity to contact some folks that have had a, had to pay the transportation cost and get some kind of idea of what it would cost. So there are transportation costs associated with it.
And I agree with that, what the motion is to, for you to apply.
There, there's always a thing, I mean, I don't know this for sure but if it's way too much, we can always change our mind.
Yeah, I just wanna hang on, in, in the application, uh, if you authorize me to sign it, then I have to initial that transportation of the item will be at your expense.
And I will know soon what Gordon had to pay, but like I said, until we know we're gonna get one and where it's at, there ain't no possible way anybody can know what's gonna cost to ship it there.
Was there a timeframe on this?
There ain't no timeframe, if, you know.
Well, just because we authorize you to sign it doesn't mean you have to sign it until we understand what the transportation costs are.
Exactly. Are we gonna know where it's coming from until you apply?
We don't. We don't. Whatever. Let's go down. It all depends what kind of helicopter it is.
Well, I know, that's why I'm saying, until you apply, you're not gonna know where the dest, to destination points are.
I know but like Mr. Grimes and I was talking today, most helicopters don't weigh a whole lot. Guy if got a good gooseneck and a duly or something could probably go pick it up.
Yeah, but it says transportation will be via a commercial carrier.
Well, it's a commercial carrier.
It's easy to obtain that status.
All I'm saying is I don't understand how we're gonna know what the destination points are gonna be until we apply.
Yeah.
Because the U.S. government's gonna have to tell us whether or not it's coming from Philadelphia, Boston, California.
Arizona.
And we can say it's kinda from North Korea to just cancel it.
You understand what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get across it. We need to know.
Well, like although that, we can specify whether we only want it to come from a given stage within the region or in general provision. I think this is, so we can narrow it down in that respect.
I, I called Washington DC to try and, and I left my number for him to call me back so I could ask him questions about where this might, one might be located close to us.
But this is not an emergency thing so if we want to table, I have no problem with that but I still don't understand how we're gonna get proper information until they actually tell us what's going on.
I hear what you're saying, I hear what he's saying. Uh, I kinda go along with you on this one. I mean, until we get more information about what's gonna go down, what's gonna happen, I think we should just table this for a little bit.
And maybe I'll have an answer by next meeting. But it's all up to you because you guys, you know, made a motion and seconded it.
Man, I'd like a huey out there but we gotta figure out what's going on first.
Who made the motion?
Yes.
Deb, would you be willing to amend at the table?
I'll amend that to table my motion.
Second, Deb. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So, good luck. Uh, hopefully their school have come from Maine or San Diego or somewhere so that we can look at a maximum distance maybe.
Maybe for that thousand dollars you can buy Gordon's.
We're a dealer so. So is this on what we just discussed Jerry?
Yes, it is. General Coligan representing Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival, a park user at Centennial Park and, and we realize that we're not the, the only, the only one that uses the park and we only use it one weekend out of the year. But, uh, for forty-three years, our, our group has kicked in over, way over a thousand dollars to, for park improvement and at least for the last fifteen years, we have luckily completely filled the park with over fifty, probably fifty-five vendors and again, that's one weekend out of the year. But, but when you start putting other things in Centennial Park, that, that sure cuts, cuts a lot of vendors out. Beautiful park, our vendors, they all excited to come to our festival once a year because we have nice trees in the park, nice green grass and these people are excited because there's water and electricity there. Some of the other, uh, events that they go to, they have to bring their own generator which cuts in to noise and, and many other, other things that, anyway, they, they really appreciate coming to Centennial Park. But yeah, there's, there's the Freedom Trail to put, uh, a helicopter or other piece of military apparatus.
So the Arts and Crafts, uh, Arts and Crafts Festival group don't think a piece of military equipment per se in this case, a helicopter, would be an enhancement with the children that go to there and, uh, for, for people bringing their families and their kids, do you don't think they would take interest in that?
Well, again, fifty to fifty-five vendors, we, we go from the stage all the way to the legion. In other words, we, we fill the park to the, to the place where some of our committee members who have now moved away, uh, decided, well, why can't we extend the festival down to Brookside Park? Well, there's, there's really no water, electricity down there and it's a long ways to walk. But, but in other words, we, we have filled the park from one end to the other with, with vendors that they, that pay taxes too.
Well, I think the way this thing has been presented, it's gonna be elevated if I'm not correct, it'll be far enough off the ground, I think there'll be space under, for, for vendors still, it's not gonna be real low to the ground, it's gonna be off the ground ways. So I, I think you'd be surprised that the space you'll see under it if we get it.
And it's going to be in that one corner right across from the American Legion so it's not like taking up the huge part of the park, it's just that front corner.
And if you wanna help make the park look a lot nicer, you could probably donate some of that money to get that transported up there for it.
Like you said, we, yeah, contribute a lot of money for, for park improvements. Anyway, just thought I'd make that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you Derek. Thank you. New business item C, possible motion, discussion to approve a two hundred dollar annual bonus for Evans Plunge lifeguards for the 2021 season.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve a two hundred dollar annual bonus for Evans Plunge lifeguards for the 2021 calendar year. In order to qualify, a lifeguard must work a total of three hundred lifeguard hours as scheduled over the ten-week peak season between May first and August thirty-first.
Discussion.
What did we budget, our budget for them?
That amount was included in our personnel.
Two hundred each?
We, we don't know how many will qualify, uh, we paid out very few this year but the year prior I think it was closer to ten but the budget does support it.
No, it, we put down two hundred in budget last year when we made our budget, two hundred per lifeguard.
Yeah, I can show you the way we estimate.
I thought, I thought we only said a hundred.
Nope, there's two hundred.
Other than two?
I, uh, I'd rather see that plunge committee work on their wages or something because I just, I feel that this two hundred dollar bonus, it singles out just certain employees and, you know, all of our employees deserve a bonus for sticking with the city. I just, I have a real hard problem just singling out just a certain few and like I say, instead of doing these bonuses for just doing their job, maybe they, the, the committee needs to, to figure out raising their wages a little bit and, I, I don't know, I, I know I have a hard time keeping lifeguards that, down there but I, I can't go along with just giving them bonuses when I know how tough of a year it's been for all the employees. And the reason of the wages at the plunge has been looked at before Wes and there just wasn't any enthusiasm from previous councils to raise the, the hourly wages so the two hundred dollar bonuses were a way to, uh, get the folks to, to stay and not spend as much. If, um, you're on board with raising rates or raising wages and the rest of the council is, that would certainly be a better way to do it. It's gonna cost you more than, uh, two hundred dollars for the lifeguards for the season. They would appreciate it but this is the situation we're in at this point is to keep these folks through the, the season because wages haven't been raised, the bonuses are the answer to it.
But there was still so much turnover down there, I, I don't see that this two hundred dollars per lifeguard really did anything. I, I just see it as a morale buster for the rest of the employees. Cause I mean, we, we seen the turnover.
The feedback from the Evans Plunge Advisory Committee and the department head of the plunge that it did have an impact on keeping lifeguards through the peak season.
Well, through the peak seasons are sold out.
That's what it was last year. Any other questions?
I wasn't part of that discussion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, Wes and Craig.
Motion passes. New business item D, uh, possible motion, discussion to dedicate the tennis courts.
Uh, we told her we'd call her.
Okay.
Uh, hers Kim Whitford, she asked to be called when we discuss this item. We'll see if she's available.
I'd like to make this a discussion to dedicate the tennis courts to Dr. Parker Park. Remembering Paul Wood.
Hi, I'm Missy and we just.
No, we put down 200 in budget last year when we made our budget, 200 per lifeguard.
Yeah. I can show you the way we estimate.
I thought, I thought we only said 100.
Nope, there's 200.
Oh, did you?
I, I'd rather see that Plunge Committee work on their wages or something because
I just, I feel that this $200 bonus, it singles out just certain employees. And you know, all of our employees deserve a bonus for sticking with the city. I just, I have a real hard problem just singling out just a certain few. And like I say, instead of doing these bonuses for just doing their job, maybe they, the committee needs to figure out raising their wages a little bit. And I, I don't know. I, I know I have a hard time keeping lifeguards down there, but I, I can't go along with just giving them bonuses when I know how tough of a year it's been for all the employees.
And the reason of the wages at the Plunge has been looked at before, Wes, and there just wasn't any enthusiasm from previous councils to raise the hourly wages. So, the $200 bonuses were a way to get the folks to, to stay and not spend as much. If you're on board with raising rates or raising wages, and the rest of the council is, that would certainly be a better way to do it. It's going to cost you more than $200 for the lifeguards for the season. They would appreciate it. But this is the situation we're in at this point, is to keep these folks through the season. Because wages haven't been raised, the bonuses are the answer to it.
But there was still so much turnover down there. I, I don't see that this $200 per lifeguard really did anything. I, I just see it as a morale buster for the rest of the employees. Because I mean, we, we seen the turnover.
The feedback from the Evans Plunge Advisory Committee and the Department head of the Plunge said it did have an impact on keeping lifeguards through the peak season.
Well, through the peak seasons are sold out.
And that was the continued.
That's what it was last year. Any other questions?
I wasn't part of that discussion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Wes and.
Motion passes. New business item D, possible motion, discussion to dedicate the tennis courts.
We told her we'd call her.
Okay.
Her is Kim Whittenberg. She asked to be called when we discuss this item. We'll see if she's available.
I'd like to make this a discussion to dedicate the tennis courts to Dr. Paul Whittemore.
Hi, I'm Missy, and we just got to this issue of the site, so I'm going to put you on my microphone and you can sit in the counter and discuss.
Okay. Just want to make sure everyone's aware of the motion that was made, or it was to discuss the dedication. And we had a motion in a second on that.
We did?
Yes. Dave made a motion to discuss.
Second.
Great, second.
Thank you.
And the reason why I, I asked this to be a discussion, I know you, Dr. Paul Whittemore, I know that he had a lot to do with the tennis courts. I just have a problem with dedicating it strictly to him without knowing the others, the thoughts of the other folks it helped. I could totally understand us doing this for only one person. If that person pretty much paid for it and donated it, I'd have no problem with that. But I don't, I've never heard from anybody else that had anything to do with, do with what was done. And then I was asked about, what about the basketball courts that are in? Does that leave them folks up to work to get those in it?
Well, we donated the park to somebody that didn't donate the park.
Who's that?
To make the park. That wasn't his park. He had the other side of the river. That park on that side belonged to the guy that owned the hotel.
You're talking about, um, can you remember?
The dog park.
Dog park.
Well, I can tell you, Dave, two of the people that was with Paul are dead now. There's another man, he has, he is fully on board with this. There was four main people basically that was up there all the time with Paul, or three other people with Paul all the time. Like I said, two of them are dead, so we're not going to get their thoughts. But I talked to a couple of family members of the one person, and they're 100% on board with this thing.
And the one that's still alive?
Ken Doole. I believe he's still living in Rapid City.
Is it possible to get anything said from him?
I, I might can try to speak for him, but I know he's not going to have any opposition.
Well, I would like to hear. I mean, what I'm saying is, there was a lot more than just one person.
No, there really wasn't. All took the lead on this thing.
That is fine. That is fine. I have no problem with your technique. But it takes more than one person to put together a project like this. It takes quite a few folks involved. And I'm just saying, it isn't proper for us to donate to just one person without hearing from the other. And if you say two of them are dead and there's one alive, and if he lives in Rapid, there shouldn't be no problem for him.
I don't know where he lives.
Oh, I thought you just said.
I, I thought he lived there, but I don't know for sure.
Well, we can find out. I mean, all I'm asking is to table. And I would like to find out who is the one that, that got the basketball courts in there. Do we know anything about that?
They were there previous to Paul making, donating, and doing the tennis courts and striping it. And the city paid for those basketball courts.
Can I add something right away? Again, Gerald Colligan, Parks and Rec Committee. Steve Shaw also gave money, and he was one of the four or five that played tennis with, with Paul. Steve's up in Rapid City right now, Army Corps of Engineers engineer. But he's the one that, that paid for the basketball, for the tennis backboard probably three times over as, as they were, the panels were replaced until he moved out of town. But talking to Steve Shaw, definitely very supportive of naming the courts after Paul, Dr. Paul.
Steve, you're a historian as far as the parks go. Who actually put up the basketball courts?
They, they were planned, definitely many years ago, specifically for basketball, for tennis at that time. But they built them so that they could flood the courts for ice skating at one time. That's why there's different bikes around, rounded. But originally, it was, it was all, all tennis. But that was, I'm not sure, years, but, but yes, that group of five guys out of their pockets, they were the ones that paid for the first surface that was put in there specifically for tennis.
So, it seems to me like those five guys, how, how five of them should have been named after them?
Let me, let me ask a question that may be a little too philosophical. Are we, are we considering this because this guy paid for a lot of stuff associated with the tennis court? Or are we honoring an individual that contributed a significant amount of his life and passion and energy to this community, and we're doing it at a facility that he cared for? And that evidently he was a real tennis nut. And so, it probably wouldn't make a lot of sense to, to name the dog park after him, even though he was a vet, so that's probably not a good example. But, because I struggled over this, you know, just because somebody donates something, do they get it named after them? And, but as I read what his daughter supplied us, I went out and I, I read his obituary. And, you know, it sounds, this guy made a choice. He was headed, it sounds like he was headed somewhere else. And he, he made a choice to make Hot Springs his home. And in the vernacular of some of the folks I hang out with, he seemed to be a real life giver to this community. And so, are we considering honoring that Paul was a life giver to Hot Springs? And to, to honor that, we're going to name a tennis court after it? Not that he paid for the paving, not that he paid for the backstop, but that he provided a needed service through a veterinary clinic. He did a lot of other stuff, and I can't remember all.
Well, I can, I can give you a little list of accomplishments.
Well, and that's.
Because I don't remember, I don't know if you've all, all seen this. I thought you did at one time.
I haven't.
But his, his daughter had, had made up this, some of the achievements. He was the founder of Fall River County's first veterinary clinic. He was the cartoonist for the newspaper for 50 years. He was the Rotary Club president. He was a Chamber of Commerce member. He was Mammoth Site Board member. He was a middle school basketball coach and an avid tennis player. Loving husband, father, grandfather, and friend of the community. He was a, he was a, he was a caring pillar of the community from the moment he arrived in 1966. And you're right, he was, he had plans going elsewhere. But he, he fell in love with Hot Springs, and he stayed here. And he, he made it his life's work to make Hot Springs better.
And that, so, Kim, I said, I, I struggled with initially, do we do this because he shelled out some money? Now, a lot of people shell out money for stuff, but is Hot Springs a better place because this guy poured his life into it? And is, is that what we're honoring? Is that what we're acknowledging? And I think, is that a better way of looking at this than another way? I'll shut up now.
No, I, I agree. That's.
I want to make a motion to dedicate the tennis courts above the park to Paul Whittemore.
We, we're already discussing a motion that Dave made to discuss this topic.
Okay, you start.
And we're not past that one.
And the reason being was, I'm getting caught. Because you guys all know I was caught. I wasn't here during presentation of what he, his dog.
Speak into the mic, please.
I wasn't here during the presentation of when all this come to fruition. So, and then when I heard about it, my thoughts were, well, did anybody ever talk to anybody else? I never heard, had no information. So, that's why I wanted to discuss it.
Well, you're from Gerald, and even like Steve Shaw, and I, I did, I forgot about Steve Shaw. He, he's.
So, you recognize that there was other folks involved?
Sure. But they weren't asking for any recognition. They just, they agreed that this is a good thing.
I'm not from here, but after what I read, I don't care about the money. The guy was a great guy. He gave a lot to this community, and I think we should honor that memory in that way. That's just me.
And I'll change my motion from discussion to a motion to rename the tennis courts in the name of Dr. Paul Whittemore.
Second.
All right. Any other comments? What, what I would like to add is Wes and I had this discussion a couple of times. And that, did there need to be a motion by the council to rename the parks and Dr. Whittemore's honor? And, or could, could it be a decision that was made at the department head level because it was just a plaque or something that she wanted up there in honor of her father? And because she wanted to dedicate it in honor of her father, then that is a discussion that's appropriate for the whole council to have. The comment I've made sounds, sounds cold, and I don't mean, mean it to be cold. But the city only has so many assets that we can honor, you know, by renaming somebody's name. So, the case needs to be made. Why in this particular case, why in this particular individual deserves the honor of having something named after them? And that's what you folks have been discussing. So, I think that's why it's important that it did come in front of the council in this fashion, so that everyone can have an opportunity to share their opinion with why they feel it's the right decision or the wrong decision.
And I think Bill said it perfectly.
But you do understand why I made it a discussion first. Not that I have anything against Mr. Whittemore by any means. He was a very good man. But I do know that there was others involved. Once you do this, there will be no addition to it.
We don't have a bunch of people burning down our door to rename anything at this point, so I.
That's at this point, Wes. A whole lot of time after us.
I think, you know, a lot of our places here in town have been named after specific, um.
Community center.
People who have done exactly what Paul Whittemore did. They were an integral part of the community. They created something that the community didn't have. And it doesn't mean that they had to have been in on the deal in the 1800s to get their name put up here, or in the 40s. But, you know, so, it's nice to see that we have people from present day that are adding or have added and, and made a big difference in our community as Paul did. So, I think it's, it's right that we can name something in our community for people going forward if they affect our community on the level that someone like Paul or Mr. Butler or Fred Evans, you know, they all did do something spectacular for town and the community.
Kim is on the phone. If the council has any questions for her, or if she has any questions of the council.
Kim, you don't have any questions for the council, right? You're just available to answer their questions if they have them?
I'm correct. I don't think any of you, but yeah, if they have any questions, I'm having a hard time hearing the conversation. But if anyone has a question for me, I'm happy to, to try and.
Any questions for Kim?
Say we vote. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Hear that, Kim?
Did you hear that, Karen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, take care.
New business item E, a possible motion, discussion to approve a plat of mammoth tracks of Block 1 of Anderson's.
I'm on the unit once, Craig. I'll make a motion to approve a plat of Mammoth Track of Block 1 of Anderson's Mountain View Edition, City of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, containing Lot 14 less the west, less the west, 15 feet of the north, 35 feet, all in lots 15 through 32, and lots 60 through 77, and the alley vacated with this plat adjacent to lots 14 through 19, and lots 65 through 40, and the previously vacated alley adjacent to lots 20 through 24, and lots 60 through 64, and the vacated portion of Ediston Avenue adjacent to lots 62 through 77, all in Block 15 of Stewart's Second Edition to the town, now city of Hot Springs, and lots 1 through 8, 9C, 10, 11, the balance of Lot 12, 13C through 23C of Block 1, and the vacated portion of Ediston Avenue adjacent to lots 2 through 6 of Block 1 of Anderson's Mountain View Edition to the city of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota.
Second.
Thank you. You too, that was on that one. Very well.
Discussion. If you folks remember, this was tabled from the last meeting. Craig had a concern to make sure that the alleys that were being vacated didn't need any kind of utility easements. And John and Tracy, you took a look at those, and everything's okay?
Everything's good.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Possible motion, new business item F, possible motion, discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $216,139.70. Make a motion on that, please.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $216,139.70 to the additional sales tax fund, 212-21200-43300 for the Jennings Avenue Bridge construction reimbursement revenue received from BIG grant funding.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to the committee reports. Before we actually get into the committee reports, anyone that's following the COVID cases in Fall River County sees that our cases are rising. They're on the increase. So, what I would like to ask is that we move our committee meetings back to the Mueller Center so that we can have a little more social distancing. Having them at City Hall, it is getting a little crowded. Some of the meetings have more people in them than others. And when we have those meetings down there along with city staff, I think the prudent thing to do would be to move those meetings back to the Mueller Center so we get some kind of sense of what's going to happen to our COVID numbers in Fall River County. So, going forward, any meetings, please move those back to the Mueller Center. Having said that, Headman Finance, Caitlin?
Our next meeting is December 7th at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
The next Airport Advisory Committee meeting is this Thursday, the 19th, 8:00 AM. That meeting will be at the airport. We will be distancing, and masks are required.
Any questions for Bill? Now, some of the folks that are part of the committee have to be at the airport to continue keeping it open. All right. Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
Could you, what, Craig's excuse my dog ate, but I misplaced my notes, so I'll be giving the next meeting again.
All right.
You can go with my dog.
You can go with my dog.
Thank you for your honesty rather than your covering. Downtown Historic Preservation, Deborah?
We'll be having a meeting this Thursday, November 19th at 1:00 p.m. at the Mueller Civic Center.
All right, thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Larry?
The meeting started at 12 noon. I was the only one asked to excuse. Committee members all present personal by phone with Sandy Ferguson, Chris Hansen, Kathy Grant, Joshua Johnson, Tom Nazz, Allison River Bush, Mary Smith. Possible Q and A regarding open committee position by school district attendee. Superintendent Fisher will be assigning us a Hot Springs school representative. Sales tax revenue refunding bonds, EPMS, purchase debt refinancing. Discuss summary of refinancing provided to be effective December 8th. Highlights cuts two years off debt service at Safe City significantly on interest charges. Update on road project. John Gregory provided an update on the design phase of the proposed roadway. Is reconstruction being considered toward North River Street at Evans Plunge? What's going on in the November, December at Evans Plunge? Big issues due to COVID impact on our community. And Evans Plunge staff, E-PAC Ford, has recommended a revised Evans Plunge schedule to become effective Saturday, November 14th through Tuesday, December 15th. The health club will also remain closed to be reassessed based upon South Dakota Health Department recommendations at December 10th, E-PAC meeting. It's open daily 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, closed Tuesdays. Members and punch card holders will receive a 30-day extension on current membership. The next meeting, December 10th, 2020, noon at the Plunge.
Any questions for Larry?
Can I catch the date of this date?
December 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Parks Recreation and Bootification, Wes?
Yeah, we had a, we had a meeting. First thing that was brought to our attention, I think we were all kind of thinking about it, was we're going to probably have to get some signage at our parks. If this marijuana thing goes through, we're going to have to try to figure out a way to keep the recreational or medicinal users from using next to the place where the kids are at. So we're going to have to come up with some signs probably eventually. But I guess we'll wait till we get a little more into it before we get real serious about signage. But something to think about, we're going to have to get some more doggy bag holders. It sounds like Butler Park. It sounds like we're being overrun with dog, dog people that ain't quite picking up after themselves. We're going to, I guess Lori and the guys out at the street shop are working on that. It was brought to our attention, we got some streetlights at Butler Park that weren't working. And Lori, I don't know if she's got a chance to talk to the Black Hills Energy people or not. I haven't had a chance to talk to her since this meeting. We talked about the springbowl again. Earlier recommendations, we're going to move forward, taking that thing out sometime this winter, probably. Not a very popular topic, I guess, at times, but probably going forward with it. We had some loss control problems with school street park, the wooden equipment. We get dinged on about every year, so we got to, we got to figure something out there. We're kind of working on something, I guess. The Conrad Signs is supposed to be down here shortly with our sign, our piece of, our letter for our sign. Fall River Water Channel has begun. I don't know, I have to talk to John, I guess. We're going to take some of that dirt out of there and we're going to take that up to Chautauqua. Or I mean to, yeah, to Chautauqua to fill in some areas up there that need some dirt. Berkside Park, we, we got to get an overview done and get, so we can get those RFPs going. We talked about the Mueller Center HBAC. That's an ongoing situation as we voted tonight, I guess, to get some more money to keep working on repairs. The depot, we found out that we have a bad panel in there. We had some water get in that panel, so there is no electricity at the depot at this point. So there's no way to have any lights down there. So I guess it's kind of a bummer, but I guess we're going to get some bids eventually here and try to get that electrical panel fixed and I guess rectify that problem. Yumaker Park, possibly a new dog park, whatever we're going to do there. We're still kind of waiting on Granny's Tree Service to take some trees out, do some work. And then the city guys are, they've got that on their radar to do, take out some of the pads and get what done, whatever they got to get done so we can move forward. We're still waiting to hear from some of these money people. They, they're going to have to come forward to make this thing go forward. So I hope they're listening. On our new business, we just finalized this Whittemore Memorial. We did, the loss control recommendation for the parks, we got to get a response back. Or we already got the response. Correct, John?
We got it.
We're working. Lori said things are going good at the cemetery. I guess, I don't know what could possibly really go wrong at the cemetery. But as long as she says things are going good, that's, I guess that's all we need to hear. Talked a little bit about the basketball goals down here at the Mueller Center. I think we're just kind of waiting on a little bit of manpower. We're still, we're still kind of hurting on that situation. And the T-ball fence, uh, I think we got to get some quotes, I think is what we're waiting on. Is that correct, John?
You don't have to give quotes for next year.
Well, that's about it.
Any questions for Wes?
When's your next meeting?
That'll be the first Wednesday in December. Wednesday at 3 o'clock at the Mueller Center.
Thank you, Wes. Planning on zoning, Caitlin?
Our meeting was scheduled for this Wednesday. We've canceled it. There will be no November meeting, and I do not believe we've scheduled a December meeting yet.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill and JR?
Public Safety will meet this Wednesday, 1:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Public Works, Dave and Craig?
We had our meetings November 10th. Those that were present with Mayor Bob, Craig, John Gregory, Mr. Tracy Bastian, Scott Soji, and myself. And we have 54 items on here, but we will lighten it up for everybody and just highlight some of the few. The RFP draft on the maintenance, the streetlight maintenance for the next three-year contract. John is working on that, put a little more teeth into our agreement. DOT, we discussed the DOT presentation, which we all saw, were part of. We are talking about burning the trash piles. Now, we have two at this time. Put together a good, per se, menu of people that we need to contact, which I will be doing with the hospital, senior head center, or senior home. You'll probably be looking later on in the year. We got to get together with, and Forest Department and see what they, what their scheduling is and how, whether it's looking. We'll be doing a lot more planning on this one than we did on the last one. I thought the last one went well, but there's always room for improvement, so we'll be doing that. See, let's go on down the line. We discussed the scrap to steel update. Do some old business. Two and a half weeks behind on the Jennings Bridge construction. It probably won't be done before Thanksgiving. So they are preparing for cold, cold weather. They seem to have it all planned out, so they're moving ahead. We discussed nuisance violations that affect the snow plowing vehicles and obstructions that will be in the road. That should be underway as being tagged. That, that actually started, or goes into play on the 22nd. We start 25th? 25th? 25th. Discussed the bucket truck repairs. And there is a question mark with that. And so we'll be looking at probably renting a bucket truck or a piece of machinery, machinery of such a sort that can help us put up the decorations.
Hey, Dave? They were using the bucket truck today.
They were, so they did get it fixed. I stand corrected on that. Discuss the shorthandedness that we have throughout all the crews, which all of us know. Billy will be taking his vacations from the 13th through the 30th. And that's about it. Not as we want to go through a whole bunch more. A little of the highlights of the meeting. Our next meeting will be, I don't know, I don't have a calendar.
That's Bob with you, Dave. Next Tuesday.
Well, I don't have, my one, my page says 10 minutes remaining.
Oh. They're, they're-
For the darn near 60 items, we-
They're going to start four and bridge tomorrow, I'm told.
Yes, that's what they're saying.
Sorry, John, if you can say something about that.
Craig, do you have anything to add?
No.
Next meeting will be next Tuesday, 1 o'clock, and where is it going to be?
The Mueller Center.
All right. Any questions for?
It was the 24th at 12 o'clock or 1 o'clock?
1 o'clock. Any questions for David Craig? Thank you, Alan. Southern Hills Economic Development, JR?
We have not met since our last meeting. Next meeting date to be determined, but will not be at the Mueller Center.
All right. Golf Course Advisory, the committee met on November 9th at City Hall. The irrigation system has been blown out, arriation is done. Fungicide has been applied. Seasonal health is gone and all equipment maintenance is due to be performed through the winter. The cart path replacement on hole number 12 is underway. Approximately 100 feet near the green has been poured with concrete. There have been donations from Builders First Source and Dave Merrill, so thank you to them for that. The recent prior on hole number 16 did not cause any damage to the adjacent fairway. On October 20th, somewhere between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 11:30 p.m., six golf carts were stolen from the clubhouse. A police report was filed and a claim was submitted to our insurance company. And we're waiting to hear back from our insurer. And we'll be looking at enhanced security measures to try to prevent this from happening in the future. We weren't the only course that had golf carts stolen. Hard Ranch, about a week prior, it had some golf carts stolen. And there were other golf courses throughout the area, Wyoming, Nebraska, that had had carts stolen. Kathy wants to replace the six carts prior to the start of the next golf season. The yearly miss cost to the city for our golf cart fleet is $50,160. In 2019, the rental of the carts generated revenue of $76,594 for a profit to the city in 2019 of $26,434. This year, the rental of the carts generated revenue of $103,946 for a profit to the city in 2020 of $53,786. The course is making a profit on the rental of the carts and should replace the six stolen carts. The next Golf Course Advisory Committee meeting will be December 14th, 5:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
Can I ask you a question, Bob?
Yes.
Don't you need the key to take the golf cart? Won't they have switches? We don't leave the keys in our golf carts, do we?
No.
No, but it's only two lights, I think, on the golf cart.
No. Don't know how they took them, but they took them.
They all use the same key.
Apparently there's a market for used golf carts.
Is that the race that I'm carrying out there?
Yes, it is.
They all use the same key. One brand, the key in one brand works for all that brand for a certain, for a certain range of years. So if somebody had a key, they could drive all six of them into a trailer or whatever and drive away.
Did they take them all one night? Yes, they took them all between, somewhere between 10:00 p.m. and 11:30 p.m. All right. That brings us to the Finance Officer Report, Misty?
I'll keep this short. Larry kind of stole some of my highlights on the sales tax revenue refunding bonds, series 2020 for our Evans Plunge Mineral Springs purchase debt refinance. If you remember, in March of this year, you approved a resolution to reissue those bonds, but it wasn't until November 5th that they were offered and sold. So a lot was up in the air until that time. It went very well, even better than we anticipated. It shaved two years off of our term as opposed to the one we originally were looking at and saves almost $300,000 in interest charges. We lowered the amount necessary for closing from $1,360,000 to $1,280,000, and we were able to keep our annual payments relatively unchanged. We do still have some work to do on our debt service reserve fund. The new amount will be lower than the old required amount due to the lower loan balance. But that was great news, and after a rough year, we were all happy to have that happen. On December 8th, we'll close, but all of those rates are now locked in. We did complete our property valuation survey recommendations, and those were sent to safety benefits today. I did email those out to the entire council by blind copy if you wanted to take a look at those. Taking the time to do those does qualify the city for about $4,000 to $6,000 in loss control credit. So thank you to all our department heads and especially John for taking the lead on getting all those done and submitted in time for, for approval by SBI. Thank you for approving the first reading of the last appropriation ordinance for the year. We will have automatic budget supplements for the next couple of meetings as we continue to pay out, request reimbursement, and receive the Jennings Bridge construction costs. So we are submitting for grant reimbursements for all of those that are approved by council and then also the CRF money that needs to be used up before the end of the year. And I just have one other update to give you since I don't have any financials. I did look and found the law that was referenced as we were talking about liquor license renewals at the last meeting. A licensee has the ability to hold on to the license for two years. So if it's been actively used by the applicant during the two years preceding the date of current application, they can continue. But there are two that were approved on our list that have not submitted their paperwork yet. If they're not renewed by the end of the year, then the licenses go back to the city. If they renew it but don't actively use it, they have two years from the date it was last used before it gets submitted back to the city. You were right. That's all I have for my update tonight.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty. John, that brings us to your city administrator report.
We'll be like Misty, we'll be quick about this. Jennings Bridge, living right along. See, I'm there pulling all the deck steel in, give all that tight down. We're supposed to be pouring concrete tomorrow. Working on Fall River Channel cleanup. These live along pretty good with that project, getting the cattails out. Get some junk out of the bottom of the channel. And as he said, we had the safety benefits, property valuation survey, which was the loss control recommendations that- loss control recommendations that department heads all have to look into. Thank you. We do have some things we need to look more seriously at our parks. That seemed to be the area we were getting the hardest on, had a lot of people out. With sickness in our parks department, so we'll probably need everybody back up and staffed up and get some things done. American Engineering Testing was drilling at the airport for K L J on New Hanover and Taxiway Plumbing. Got to be Ivan up there, C G, Catwalk, and four and one. We're fixing to start drilling for North River Street project, get the geotechnical test holes done on that. Got an interesting meeting with the VA up there to identify their mystery wind line. If we can get it located fairly close, we're going to stay well away from that. There's no way to cut that water off.
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. Want to talk a little bit about the cattails and trees along the flood channel near Centennial Park. Work was started last week to build an access ramp of the flood channel to begin removing the cat tubes. It was necessary to remove some existing trees along the flood channel to build that access ramp. A number of folks have expressed their frustration, disappointment, and even anger that the trees were removed. Those feelings are understandable, but the trees had to come out, not only for the channel access, but because those same trees were within a 15-foot encroachment area of the flood channel, the Corps of Engineers has previously cited the city for. Likewise, the cattails have been cited on the Corps' reports. These same deficiencies have been on the Corps' annual inspection report for years. The work currently being done on the flood channel is work the city should have already completed and work the city will need to continue into the future. Now, work on the redesign of the city website is progressing. I've met with Misty, Justin, and Scott to identify suggested changes to the website and to make sure that all the current documents on our existing site are up to date. We'll begin working with the website design folks after the first of the year to get our redesigned website online as soon as possible. And lastly, COVID has impacted city safety, so we're not going to be able to get to some things as quickly as we would like to. Need to ask the council and the public to be patient with the folks that are remaining to do the work, and as they work through their individual circumstances, they'll be returning to the city, but this is the new reality that we're all dealing with, so asking to be patient, and we'll try to get things done as quickly as we can with the staffing that's available to us. So with that, need a motion to go into executive session for South Dakota Code of Law 1-25-2-3 legal.
I would like to make a motion, we can win to executive session, South Dakota Code of Law 1-25-2-3-legal.
Sorry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and we don't expect any action after executive session. We needed five minutes pause before we actually convene.
I've been trying for 22 hours.
Did you ask Chris if that's whether it's really heat in here because of the dam?
This one's working fine. Yeah. It's not. Nope.
We forget the heating belt. See? There was a lot of heat in that room, that's why. Lot of hot air. Lot of hot air. You have a lawyer. I'm waiting. Why don't you sit down? I'm ready.
You have a motion to adjourn? Take a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Let's talk about that helicopter a little more.